Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Our workshops have a number of things on the agenda tonight, starting with a few resolutions for budget, I believe, adjustments, transfers. And so do you want to go one by one on these? Or Michelle, do you want to go over each one? How does it? Do you guys want to work this?
Um, I guess the question would be, does anybody have any last final comments on the budget?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Good.
Okay, I made a quick few changes that I emailed to everybody. We got a little bit, the aim restored. We got a little bit extra chips. And I added more money for the end points. So those are the only small changes I made since the last time we had a discussion. Those numbers are reflected in the resolution. So if anybody's okay with the changes, then I think it's just going forward and adopting the resolution to adopt the budget.
Okay.
Which is balanced. Hooray.
Always bell. Michelle always balances.
Okay, so we will, let's go to the first. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 09-2021, the general fund budget. A resolution adopting a general fund budget for fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2021, and ending on May 31st, 2022, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Coal Spring government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Following resolution was offered by, I made the motion, we already did this. Whereas the board has met at the time and placed specified in the notice of public hearings on the tentative general fund budget.
Excuse me, David, did we get a second?
No. I second.
Sorry, okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Michael. Whereas, I'll do the next one right. I have three to get it right here. Or more. Whereas this budget has met at the time and placed specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative general fund budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative general fund budget as amended and revised and as herein after set forth in the amount of $2,650,129. Is that right? Yes.
149.
What's that?
149.
Yes, I thought that's what I said. It's hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative and the tentative fund, general fund budget, but hereafter referred to as adopted is Schedule A are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries which is stated in the salary schedule of the tentative general fund shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April 27, 2021. And further be resolved that the tentative fireman's service award tax levy as amended and revised and as here and after set forth in the amount of $35,000 is hereby adopted and the amounts stated are hereby appropriated for the object and purpose specified and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April 27, 2021. We have a roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
I. Okay, next is Resolution, Resolution 102021, water fund budget. A resolution adopting a water fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June 1st, 2021 and ending on May 31st, 2022, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Coal Spring government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. The following resolution is offered by, I will make the motion.
Well, second.
Fran's got it.
Have a second from Fran. Whereas this, this board has met at the time and placed specified in the notice of public hearings on the tentative water fund budget in here and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative water fund budget as here in after set forth in the amount of $794,374 is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative water fund budget, but hereafter referred to as adopted in Schedule F are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified in the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative water fund budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Next is Resolution 11-2021 sewer fund budget. Resolution adopting a sewer fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June 1st, 2021 and ending on May 31st, 2022, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Coal Spring government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers, employees for such period. I will make the motion to adopt Resolution 112021.
Second. Kathleen's got that. Kathleen's got that one.
Okay. Whereas this board has met at time and placed specified in the public hearings on the tentative sewer fund budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon. Now therefore be resolved that the tentative sewer fund budget as herein after set forth in the amount of $556,101 is hereby adopted and that the several months, several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative sewer fund budget, but hereafter referred to as adopted in Schedule G are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative sewer fund budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Roll call.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
I. Next is, let's see. Resolution 122021, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, the Village of Coal Spring here hereby approve the following budget adjustments for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And to the accountant, accountant is hereby authorized to transfer such funds immediately. Is there any questions or discussion on this?
Not for me.
Nope, not for me.
End of the year movements.
Good. Anything needed from you, Michelle, or comments?
Um, no, I tried to put the description. So if no one has questions, exactly like Kathleen said, end of the year movements, I try to keep everything within the departments as best I can.
Okay, sounds good. Roll call then, Michael.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That was, that was easy, painless. Thank you. As always, Michelle, great job. Thank you.
Michelle, thanks very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Michelle.
Good to see you. Good night.
Okay, this is another discussion on the Main Street bathrooms and this, I hope, will be the last. A lot of time either in meetings or out of meetings has gone into this. Kathleen, I guess you're more aware of than others on this, if you'd like to comment on this or the discussion.
I don't know that I'm anywhere anymore aware. Michelle and I had a conversation on Thursday with Eliza regarding the Chamber of Commerce's offer to cover the cost of Saturday bathroom cleaning so that our highway crew can have a break from, from cleaning the bathrooms on the weekend on that day. Eliza, it's probably best if you take from here, the, the we're, we're trying, I think, to come to a point where Saturday, the management of Saturday and the payment of Saturday is all chamber responsibility and the village takes care of the rest of the week. So maybe you could fill us in on where you are with your board on that question. Whoops, you're muted.
Yeah, so we were just sort of discussing how to get it done. The Chamber of Commerce is totally committed to getting the restroom cleaned on Saturdays. We really appreciate the village. Extending the days to seven days a week after Memorial Day and opening them early this year. I think that you guys have gone far beyond where we've seen in the past and we're really appreciative of that. And at the end of the day, we just want to see the bathrooms clean on Saturdays as well. So we're willing to work with you guys however works best. The chamber has the ability to channel funds, but not collect funds because of our organization structure. So we have a couple of options that we can handle. We're happy to channel funds to the village, which would allow for the donors, which will be mainly business owners on Main Street, to get acknowledged and for the village to you know, have that on record, which we support. But that would then require the village to manage it. And I know you guys have a lot on your plate right now and probably would rather not. So I'm happy to do the management end of it and we can manage the funds a different way through the chamber. And if that's the better way for the village, we just, you know, it's really kind of up to you guys what you think is most appropriate. But it, it would be our privilege to be able to do that for the village.
I would thank you for, for this offer and to working on this with this. I, I would really like it if you, if you guys handled everything and the responsibilities kind of fell on you. We'd make sure our insurance would cover you, I believe, and, and we can work out some of the other details. But I for one would like, you know, I would like you guys to take responsibility and, and manage the, the whole process.
Okay.
So then the chamber would enter into a contract with the cleaner for Saturdays.
That's right.
Great.
Great. Thank you so much.
And then I think you would just have to send, we just have to agree, or you'd still send us, I believe, some type of agreement, right? Same as last year, similar.
We'll update the agreement to include that in, in the, the village agreement we have and send you guys a draft. And if you can let us know how it looks and we'll move on from there. But it looks like we're in good shape and we've got more volunteers signed up to volunteer. So things are going well there.
As far as the parking goes, you, when will you guys, or do you anticipate starting to, to man this, the visitor center?
We were aiming for Memorial Day weekend. So, and I think that we'll probably start the cleaning schedule then as well. Just to start the season then. And that'll give us enough time to organize it well.
Okay, just a question.
I have a couple. The parking, so I think we'll, we can work something out hopefully with that. Sorry, Marie, I think I cut you off. Didn't mean to.
That's okay. That's okay, Dave. I don't mind. If the chamber is going to have someone cleaning Saturday mornings, can we cancel the cleaning late Friday afternoons?
I think we were thinking to have the person come in in the afternoon because Saturday is so heavy that my volunteers have reported that even in past years when visitors, when the highway crew would clean it Friday night by one or two, the toilets would be out of toilet paper. So we were hoping to have someone come in in the afternoon because it would be the most practical working solution for the whole day.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. Okay, so, so again, thank you and, and the the folks that are donating, appreciate it.
Yeah, please definitely thank your membership for stepping forward in partnership.
We will, and we'll make sure that all the donors are listed on our page so that it's public knowledge and everybody can that do that.
Right on.
Thank you. All right, next discussion on correspondence from residents concerned with Keep Coal Spring Beautiful campaign. Not going to read the correspondence, but there were, I believe, three from residents below the tracks. They were concerned that the, this campaign, which wasn't a campaign by Coal Spring, I'm at the chamber. I thought it a good idea to direct people to parks and kind of, you know, kind of spread, spread the, the number of people around, I guess. And also there were signs for the trash and others and which would, were posted in, I believe, in the, a lot of the shops now. So, but I think the main concern was people saying that felt that this, these signs would direct more people in an already overburdened areas or in the park. And I believe they were referring to mostly either dockside or the riverfront parks. Did I kind of sum that up appropriately? Somebody would like to add.
I would say that the signage, the, the concept behind the signage was a, sort of the theme of the campaign was be a good visitor campaign that talked about making sure your trash goes in the garbage and you're staying six feet apart on Main Street. And then there was some effort to try to get folks from being congested on Main Street while with their masks off and eating by having them spread, spread around a bit. It certainly, I don't think it was an intentional push to get people below the river, but to say there are other, there are other areas in which you can spread out in the village. And the, and the map that Dave, for the particular poster that Dave's referring to, did not just show the waterfront parks. It also showed stony, a little stony point and the Foundry Preserve. So the, the parks in, in and around the village.
Right, thank you. That was the important, important note. Yeah, it was for all, all the parks. I don't know how anyone else feels. I personally don't think that this is going to drive any more people to the riverfront park than they're already there. I feel a lot of people will be continuing to eat or buying something and snacking on Main Street or whatever. Maybe some will go to others. I don't see it being like a mass exodus of Main Street down to the riverfront park or which I feel like we're most concerned about.
From what I've noticed, walking around Main Street, very few of the merchants on Main Street have actually adopted that sign in their windows. And Eliza, you've got it in your window. Maybe one or two other vendors. So it's not like we're, you know, pushing that all over the place. It's nice to know there are places to sit down. I understand, I understand with the people, I guess I understand, I don't really walk below the tracks that much. I guess it gets crowded down there. But that's where the parks are and that's where people need to go. I'm not, I wouldn't say to, you know, do a real big push of it, but I don't think there's that many signs around that are really pushing people down there at this point. So I'm not sure that it's really a big issue. I mean, I think people are afraid that it's going to become an issue, but when the votes come in, people are going to be down there anyway in mass and, you know, and that's another whole issue. So I don't, I'm not sure that there's a big problem with it. I don't, I don't see the signs around. Eliza, I don't know if you know, people have just opted not to put those signs out. I don't, I'm not sure I would agree if I were a merchant on Main Street with pushing people away from Main Street in my shop to go down to the riverfront. So maybe that's why the signs are not in most of the shops.
Do you want me to respond?
You can.
Okay. Um, I think the pizza shop and, and my shop are the only two that have it up. I do see people study it and I often, when people are planning a picnic, they're picking up cheese and beverages. I do often encourage them to get off Main Street to do so. And I tell them about parks and I did that before we had the maps up and they were always really appreciative. And I thought that was a benefit because Main Street is a crowded space and it is a more finite, narrow space. And we're in a pandemic and having people picnicking in the middle of Main Street is not the most optimal for health safety concerns. I think that being big, wide open public spaces makes those parks more safe. And the Mumu's corridor is a little crowded and congested. And, and I think Mumu's should have that poster in their window, sending people over there to the, the wide open field rather than maybe right there in the dock by the fan stand, but it, it's really gentle nudging. I don't, I, I kind of agree. I think somebody else that said, maybe David said that it's not going to completely, it's not going to channel people down to that one point. There were four different points that were recommended. It's just going to smooth out and even village traffic if it has any effect at all.
I mean, it's not a requirement. It's, it's a, hey, guess what? We have other places to go look at, you know?
And I, I think that's, I maybe I'm mistaken, but I think that's what parks are for. I mean, so I don't know. They're parks. It's the waterfront and if people are looking for a place that don't want to eat on Main Street, there, there are options and, you know, I, I think everyone, there's a lot of, a lot of folks visiting, so.
Um, there were a couple of points brought up sort of across the communications that where we might be able to, to bring some relief. You know, I agree, our waterfront is a public waterfront. It has been for a very long time. This isn't a new situation. I do recognize that the waterfront, the folks who live along the waterfront tolerated huge crowds last summer because it's a beautiful place to be and it's a public park. And all of the village was, was really heavily impacted by higher numbers last year. And, and, you know, I hope that we begin to see, maybe see a lessening of, of masses, but it's unlikely given that we're on the train line and, and just north of the city and it's a gorgeous place to be. Sort of it's, it's one of the prices we pay living in a, living in a beautiful place to live with visitors. And sometimes it's too much. I, I understand that. A couple of the letters referenced places that I just want to point out are not within the control of the village. They're not village properties. Like the landing next to the chapel in the Metro North Station. Those are properties that the village we can't make choices about how they're used because they're in other ownership. But there were the other points that I thought that maybe we could be helpful with were regarding additional garbage cans. And there was a question about bathroom use. I know I'm wondering if we can, first of all, we have to acknowledge that the park, the, the dockside, because it, it is in a part of the state system, we have, we, we control it in the village, but it is a carry and carry out like other state parks. So there aren't a lot of garbage cans throughout the park. But maybe we can provide additional cans at the entrance to dockside. And maybe, I don't know, I'm throwing that out as an option, but it does seem that garbage is a consistent problem that people are concerned about, particularly with post, post ice cream cups and napkins and things. So maybe we can add additional cans down there. And I, Fran and I, I asked Fran earlier today to remind me what the history was of, at a time, for a time, there were portageons in the portion of the, the waterfront area near the dock at the north end, still, still on the village side, not on dockside. There was a row of, of portageons. And I don't know if that was just, they were left from large events like Fourth of July, they were left longer, or if those were left for a period of, they were put there purposely for a period of time in the summer. And if that might provide some relief, I don't know who funded them or how they were, ended up there.
So on your first point, the area that is immediate inside the cement block wall, that's not ours. It's not.
Correct.
So putting garbage cans there.
I mean, at the entrance to dockside. I know that that is private property. I'm talking about at the entrance, right at the end of the, of the street where you, where the, the no vehicle chain is up. If there could, we can put additional garbage cans there so that as people go in and out of the portion that is the park, there's an easier, a more accessible receptacle.
And as another point, as Kathleen was saying about some of the, some of the suggestions. And I'm looking through them, closing Main Street, and we've discussed this a million times, is not possible because it's the in and out of a train station, of the Metro North train station. So closing Main Street to put picnic benches is not possible. Putting food trucks in the Metro North parking lot, which also doesn't belong to us, is not possible because it's not ours. And I believe Kathleen touched the others. So some of the suggestions, while they look like they make sense, they're not anything that we can handle or do. And, and it just is what it is. You, you, you live at a park at a riverfront and people go to parks and riverfronts and that's just what they do.
Well, one of the problems with the garbage is that you can go down there, Bugsy will testify to this. I don't know if he's on or not. But that, all the garbage cans on the, on the dock itself can be empty and people won't go out there and use them. They will just keep throwing their cups from Mumu's.
Right, right.
In one can, which is on the corner, and if it's overflowing, they'll just keep putting more and more on top of it when right around the corner are four or five cans.
Could we double them up so that we have multiples in, in locations, in the same locations where the heavy use is?
We could put like one, like we could put them side by side all the way down the street and see how that works.
Well, no, I'm serious. I'm wondering if, if putting two or three in locations that do get heavy use will help alleviate the overflowing trash and that at least contains the issue. I know it's not ideal, Marie, but it's, you know, it's garbage. It's garbage. You're going to deal with it.
We could. Go ahead.
On a hot summer afternoon, when the garbage can is full, it's also filled with yellow jackets. Refugees from Mumu's just attracts insects.
It's going to, no matter where you are, right?
They're putting two or three or four in a row. It's like, hey, come here.
Well, I mean, you either have it spilling over onto the ground or you have it in a receptacle where it's contained. To me, I would think a receptacle where it's contained is preferable to having it overflowing on the ground.
I can, I can talk to Bugsy and we can definitely get another one down there.
Dave, I'm, maybe it's a bad example, but on July 4th, we have a couple lined up and they're, they're full, full, full.
They're what?
They're full. I would imagine on summer weekends, they get really full really fast.
Well, we have the option to do nothing and leave the situation as it is, or we have the option to try by putting out additional cans and see if it helps to alleviate some of the concerns.
If, if the concern is overflowing trash cans, you mean?
Yes. And perhaps it will be just more overflowing, but at least it's overflowing. It, it's in containers and not on the ground.
I'll talk to Bugsy. We can, we can add at least one and I'll, I'll talk to him about what, what's actually, he's, he's the person that's most aware of, of, of what's going on down there.
Uh, Dave, Eliza has her hand up.
Yes, I thought she was saying stop.
Wow, that, that may be the case. We'll have to find out.
Go ahead, Eliza.
Um, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt you guys. I just wanted to circle back around because I know I, I think I sent the proposal for putting the signs. If the can is full, put it in the next can up. And maybe those signs only would be really appropriate down there. Did you guys have a chance to review that? And do we have approval?
I think we, I think we, did we approve all the signs that we saw?
I think we just and it's tried a little, little photoshopping and show sort of what it would look like on the so the, and the size, or maybe actually, I think you did send that.
They were like zip ties, zip ties, holding them at the top and the bottom.
Right.
So it, it eliminated the slack problem.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm fine with, I don't know. It seems like something that would be common sense, but maybe someone needs to have some direction. So I don't think it'll hurt. I, I, I'm fine with putting the sign down there or signs on some of those cans, maybe not on dock, on the dock itself, but definitely the one near the street. You know?
It's worth a try.
Yeah.
All right. So if we have your approval, we'll go ahead and get those laminated and put them up as soon as possible.
Is everyone else okay with them?
Yes, yes.
Kathleen, your question about the portageons.
Yeah.
On, on the west side of West Street. Those were part of the Community Day event. They were brought in the day or two before the event and then were removed as soon as the company could come and pick them up. So they're, they're not typically there. It's just for that short period of time.
So maybe it was just that it took, it took some time for them to come get them and that's what I'm remembering.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did the Film Festival, or, um, did they have portageons up there?
Inside.
During the summer, I know, inside dockside, but didn't they set them up for the summer? And at one point we piggybacked on those.
I think we, I think they ended up locking them. I think we, I think they ended up locking them. I, I had, had locks, uh, that, that they locked them after their, you know, after they.
Their events, okay, which makes sense because they pay for the time that they're being used and, you know, you can't have it open all the time because they don't get cleaned.
Yeah. The one thing that we did try two years ago was, uh, portageons at the, the space at the, at the east end of Main Street, right up against the railroad tracks when C Street was in town. And, um, they were locked as soon as they were delivered. I went down the next morning and the locks were all broken.
Oh, jeez.
So, but I mean, the locks that they put up, that the portageon, uh, are zip ties. And so all the zip ties were, were ripped off.
So isn't that telling us that people needed to use them?
Or that they're being mischievous.
Being destructive, you know, like seriously.
Well, were they, were the units destroyed or just the zip ties?
Zip ties. The zip ties were unlocked. And this was from Friday night to Saturday morning.
But, but was there damage to the unit or was it just that the zip tie was opened?
I didn't go into the units to determine.
I mean, it seems like, it seems like if you have to go and you can't find a place and you see it and it's just a zip tie, you know, you could see how somebody desperate would do that to use the toilet.
Uh, when I was down there, there was a Metro North I just dropped off and, uh, I was on, near the visitor center and there was probably thirty people in line or whatever. And I said, um, they're right across the tracks, there are portageons and nobody left, everybody.
I can't say that I blame them. I can't, I can't.
Well, if you can't blame them, then why install them?
Well, I just, I'm sort of, I'm inquiring about what the, what your experience had been with them. Um, and I guess I, I'm not, I, I don't feel like I could draw the conclusion tonight that it was, that they were the, the zip ties were taken off to damage them. It sounds to me like potentially they were taken off to use, so.
If they were at night, I doubt they're, well, who knows?
Who knows?
We can only speculate.
But we can do something about the garbage, right? We can, we can attempt and experiment with the can. So that's one step.
Yes, we can. So we'll do that. I'll follow up with Bugsy. Uh, we do have them just, uh, to, you know, that the, we do have them in the park and I believe Bugsy goes in there and they empty those ones also. So.
Cans.
Cans. And I believe that you wouldn't want to have portageons in the park because it's very dark and little kids go in there at night, not little, and they're fun to knock over and stuff. Anyway, not that I would know, but.
Dave, it's all about cow, it's all about cow tipping. What are we talking about, portageons?
I've never done that. Don't do that to the poor cow. Probably gonna damage. Uh, okay, so, uh, so, okay, let's, let's move on from here. Um, do more fun stuff. Well, it means more work also. Uh, so Community Day. Um, we decided to move from Fourth of July to, uh, the Labor Day weekend, I believe it, the fourth, September 4th, Saturday rain date, the fifth. We have secured, uh, secured the fireworks. Both Kim Connors and Nick Groombridge have, uh, generously, uh, will, will donate them again this year. Um, I've secured, uh, donation from Magzino for $2,000 for music and also $1,000 from M and T Bank. Uh, and they, they supported us in the last few years. So, uh, that's, that's a start, um, to take care of the music and, uh, get, get things going. Uh, whether or not we can have it, I guess is still yet to be seen, but I'm, I'm hoping we will be by then. Pretty confident we will hopefully. Uh, anyway, we'll see where that goes. But, um, just wanted to open this up. We're gonna have to, we usually start working on it about four months before, which is right about now, so um, we need to, uh, put an ad in the paper again, or I'll call, I'll contact the people that were on the committee last year. Um, Lions Club were a big part of it, so I'll talk to Ginny Timmons or Ginny Pedala. And a few of the other people that helped organize. And maybe, uh, we'll put something in the paper and ask for more, uh, more volunteers, see, and see where we can go with this.
Dave, didn't we have a problem with the Lions couldn't, um, couldn't staff it last year?
They couldn't what?
Two years, that the Lions couldn't staff it two years ago.
I think it was the Knights of Columbus couldn't staff, the Lions, Lions were there.
Yeah, Lions were there for the last few years and I think Little League, I think got involved last, last time around.
We scrambled. Do we, do we want to get some, some food trucks in?
That's something we should, you know, when we get the committee going, I think we should discuss that. And also whether we want to have a parade or not.
Yeah, the, the, we got, we got mixed reviews from the food trucks.
Yeah, we did. We got, there's either people angry or either way, they're angry.
Yes.
Hard, hard, hard to make people happy.
They didn't like your spots. They, they didn't like the spots we put them in.
Right.
Oh, I see. The, not, not the food. It wasn't the food that was problematic. It was where they were.
The vendors, they didn't like where they were or they felt, you know, some would have, uh, if they were serving hot dogs and someone was serving hot dogs to wait and that was interfering with the profit. So it was really hard to make everyone happy. In fact, it was terrible. It's, so, but, you know, uh.
No, we've also got a number of new, Philip, there have a number of new food trucks in Phillips Town that people seem to love, right? There's the, there's the, um, is it Vietnamese? Near Perks Plaza and I mean, so maybe, maybe there are more options available now and food trucks.
It wasn't a question that people didn't like the food trucks.
Right.
The food trucks didn't like where they were. And, and you just have so much space that you can put them.
Well, right, right. But maybe we have happier vendors now.
Need to have a pie baking, pie baking contest.
Anyway, I think we, the committee can, uh, can discuss that and, and see if they, uh, you know, if they want to entertain that and how to go about it. The one thing is like the Lions Club, almost, I think all their profits, they, every year, whatever they make goes right back into the community. So I always feel like, you know, they sell the beer, that's, that's what they'd like to sell. So, you know, they also had, you know, concerns the last two years. Well, two years ago when we had them, uh, had the, uh, the, uh, event, uh, we had a beer also inside the park, um, but they felt that took away, so they weren't happy. So, you know, things like that, but, um, the, uh, Lions Club will, you know, definitely help organize and set up and whatever and are a part of it. But, um, so I'll, I'll contact them, um, and we'll have to, I'll check the calendars for, see when we can meet and maybe put a blast out there if, if there's other volunteers that would like to help.
Dave, you may remember the parade was not exactly, the parade was a lot of work and not really worthwhile.
Well, like, the one big problem with the parade was that it was sweltering hot.
Bringing hot, yeah. Better. It's September.
But you, you're gonna have that in September as well. The heat continues into the middle to the end of September.
It's not gonna be a hundred and three.
No guarantee.
Well, also you could think about things like, maybe rather than doing a midday parade, doing the parade later in the afternoon or in the morning before the day is, you know, not in the heat of the day. I feel like, I feel like this community, it is, it is killer in July, no question. But I feel like this community loves to parade and it's such a, it's such a joyful thing and it feels like such a cold spring tradition. I mean, I love to see people posting pictures of old parades in the village and looking at people and saying, oh, like that guy still walks in the parade there. He's, he's fifteen there and now he's eighty, you know? It, it feels like if we ca, if we can find a way to do it, it feels like a very cold spring thing and what could be better on Community Day?
Oh, I, I, I think, uh, again, that's something they should bring them up. I would, I would agree with you. I, I like parades. They are a lot of work and they weren't too successful because, uh, especially two years ago, not the last time we had it, the year before, it was, it was, it was hell.
It was so hot, yeah.
Uh, yeah, people, and I don't think people wanted to join in the next year. But we had quite a bit of interest in it the year we did have it and except the heat was just terrible.
So maybe, maybe timing is one thing and time of day could be another.
Yeah.
This year also the, I believe sunset's around seven thirty or so because it's going to be in September, so we have to work that into, usually it's later in the summer and nine o'clock's when we have the fireworks, but this year, yeah, we could have them at nine o'clock again, but, uh, sun's definitely setting a little earlier, so.
I think Rebecca has her hand up.
Gee.
Um, Michael, does Rebecca? Oh, sorry.
I didn't think I did, but, um, public comment at the end, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hand up. Somebody seems to have their hand up. Okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll comment. We'll, we'll get through that soon. We're almost there. We want, not at the end of the night, just at the end of, uh, number eight. So.
Okay.
So if everyone's okay, I'll, uh, I'll get things moving on that. We'll talk to Jeff, see if we can schedule a date and, uh, put an advertisement in and, uh, and, and get things going. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. Next is the approval of minutes. Um, let's see. I know there's one that I was not in here. I'm not sure which one. The, uh, approval of minutes, uh, or April six, two thousand and one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Two thousand and twenty-one?
Well, yes, sorry.
Second.
There is one that's, I, I can't see there. I'm scrolling. I'm not sure which one I wasn't.
There was, four eighteen was on the agenda, but it was, it was meant to be four eight, right? If we don't have.
It says four six.
Yes.
Four six is good.
I made a motion. I seconded it.
Okay, um, this is one I will abstain from. I wasn't there, so all in favor?
I.
Aye.
Okay, next is four eighteen twenty-one.
That's the eight, correct?
It's actually four eight.
Four eight, yeah, just it was incorrect on the agenda.
Okay, so four eight twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, four thirteen twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Uh, no, I, I, I have a problem with that. The fourth thirteen.
Well, well, should we, I was gonna get discussed, so can I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion, Marie?
Yep, um, there's a, um, a, a day, a time that's missing. And I thought Jeff was going to, um, just delete the end time, but the minutes showed, still show an end time, so.
Is that the wedding one?
It was under rec commission.
Yeah, the wedding, okay.
So, um, I think we need to get that changed.
And did the, um, under financial report, did the blank that was left there get filled in?
I didn't. Yes, you can see.
Okay, I'm, I, I must be looking at the last one. Okay, but the blank is still unfilled. I mean, the, out time is still unfilled.
Yep.
So the time is, do we know the time or we can't?
No, as it turns out, the, um, application for a wedding as a start, it does not have an end time.
Okay, all right, so.
Should we table it?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, now we'll go to, uh, public comment. Rebecca, if you're still here with us, you're up first.
Okay, hi. Um, I, I was just going to say, as I, as I was listening to, um, talking about the trash, uh, one thing, uh, Kathleen, people tend to normally keep throwing trash. Uh, what, what is a great solution is like putting one, you wanna, you wanna limit how many trashes you are, but, but street, be strategic about where you place them. I know that in business districts, they literally put them on the four corners sometimes, but, but that problem, I think the signage is a, a great idea of, because that, that culture of throwing trash on the floor, it's, it's not gonna go away with certain populations. Um, the signs complaint, I just wanted to say that, uh, it could be a really great opportunity, um, Eliza, to use the business owners as, sorry, we haven't put ours up, the sign. Um, we, we actually do still have it in the store and I was going to replace the Earth Day poster with it. Uh, but I actually think it'd be a great opportunity to create like a takeaway. Like people don't know where these places are, right? The person who called with the complaint is, is fearful that everyone is going to go to that one place. And it could be actually a, a nice like, um, giveaway, like a piece of paper that says like, you know, these are the five places, these are where they are, like, these are their names, just like a tiny little postcard or something, because people don't know where they are, they don't know the names of these parks and it could be a good way of distributing, distributing that traffic and moving the traffic in five directions as opposed to them just going to the riverfront. Um, uh, oh, and then there was one thing that you said about, you were talking about food trucks? And I was saying, going to say, if you do use food trucks, I would ask everyone to highly consider placing them, um, in a place that would allow for them to be anchors and to function as anchors. So moving them to the top of Main Street or to, you know, over Mayor's Park, like moving them in a place where that will allow for, for them to be a destination. Um, that's not already full of people. So those are just my comments. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have anyone else? Michael?
I'm here. Uh, no, no one else.
Just you, okay. All right, with that, uh, I guess we will, uh, segue into our, uh, into our code update work. Out from the board, anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
So, uh, we'll go into our code update. Um, as usual, uh, we won't be taking public comment after the end of this. Um, but we will have a public hearing where you will be able to voice your opinion or concerns. So, um, that said, um, would you like to take over Fran or Marie with?
Sure.
We're starting on chapter forty.
Yeah.
Um, and, and this is a chapter that I think we were waiting for some comments from Charlotte, Marie.
Yes.
I know we, we did this briefly today.
Yeah, so, um, I spoke with Charlotte and reviewed with her, um, the, if you look at F, there's an addition to F. If the proposed work is referred to another board, the code enforcement officer will require the completion of a building permit addendum in which the applicant certifies that the final construction documents submitted are an exact match to those which received board approvals that resulted from deferrals.
Okay, we're on page, we're on page seven.
Yeah, I, I think that, that addresses the, uh, the point that, uh, you and Al brought up, Kathleen. Do you agree?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so with that, we can delete the E, a notarized affidavit, right? That can be deleted. And we can accept, oh yeah, whoops.
No, that, that's not gonna work.
No.
Hang on for a second. Okay.
He, okay. And then, right. You want to get rid of the extra F there?
I will.
Okay.
Sorry, I have to straighten out my screen. I can't, I can't watch you guys and, and do the screen at the same time. Sorry. Okay, so, that look proper?
Yeah, can you put a, a blank line between, uh, the period in E and the beginning of F?
Sure.
Okay, great. And then if you can accept the comment at the, uh, bottom of F.
Got it.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, the, um, the next question I see is the amendment fee.
Right.
Um, do we need to have that here or does that go into the master fee?
It goes into the master fee schedule.
So, um.
Where are we, Fran, or?
I'm sorry, we're on page eight. Um, in enough, in section H.
Got you.
We're looking for, um, where, it says an amendment fee. We were gonna ask Charlotte for the recommended amendment fee. Did she come up with it, Marie?
Right. Right. I I'm I'm gonna have to go back to the master fee schedule to see whether or not I've included it.
Okay, so can we just mention here about amendment fee will be charged? This fee will be found in the master fee schedule?
Yep. I'm not sure that you need to add the this fee. It may be, oh, go ahead.
Okay. Be charged. He will be charged. Um, I'm not sure that reads right.
It does.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just
Is there a
You need a comma there, though, right? Will be charged. I think. Um, I don't know.
Amendment. All right, let me just do something else. Amendment fee, comma, which will be found in the master fee schedule. Actually, comma, does that read better?
Looks okay to me.
Okay, uh, and so we have to just make sure that it's in the master fee schedule.
Right, I will take that.
Okay.
And then if you go, yeah, you're there, right.
On page eleven, um, in C, contents of certificate of occupancy.
I'm sorry, can you back up? Page nine. Page nine, um, two, sorry, I'll go up uh to uh left turn, two, right turn.
Okay.
Uh, see, there's a semicolon followed by comma. I think that the comma should be deleted there.
Is this in B?
No, in A.
Two.
It page.
Oh, and A, okay.
Stop work orders.
Where am I? Okay, I'm on the wrong page then.
Forty dash six. A, left turn.
There we go. Okay. Right, I got it.
Okay, great.
There we go. Okay.
Sorry.
Um, now, that's okay. Down to page eleven, uh, C, contents of certificates of occupancy, certificate of compliance.
Yeah.
Um, okay, added in number four, if the certificate of occupancy is not applicable to an entire structure, a description of that portion of the structure for which the CFO is issued. Am I reading if certificate of occupancy? Okay, let's start from the beginning. Certificate of occupancy shall contain the following information, blah, 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 blah. Building permit, date, name, and address. If the CFO is not applicable to entire structure, a description of the portion of the structure, should this?
So the certificate of occupancy shall contain the following information.
Right.
If the CFO is not applicable to an entire structure, structure, a description of that portion of the structure for which the CFO was issued, that's the
Got you. Okay.
Okay, in the case of a certificate of clients, description of of the work for which the C of C is issued.
Okay, so it's going to contain the following, and if it's this, it will contain a description. If it's that, it will contain another description.
Right.
Okay. Temporary certificate, um, Charlotte is recommending a fee for the temporary certificate. Did we stick that in here anyplace?
Um. I don't know that it's in here, but I will make sure it's in the master fee schedule.
Okay, should we put a note in here? Uh, should we put it to wish it temporary?
Should we just Be scheduling, Fran?
I'm sorry.
You mean referencing the fee?
Referencing that there is a fee and it will be found in the master fee schedule. Should I put it at the end?
Seems logical to me.
Should be effective for a period of time. Uh, A, B. Does that read?
Yeah, looks good.
Looks good.
Fee should be charged. Okay, such fee can be found. All right, so that's so that's two fees that we have to make sure in the master fee schedule.
I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
At the end of D, right above E, it's a one thirty-four with period, and then uh, there's a couple of spaces there right where you are now, Fran.
Okay. As I bounce around. You talking about here?
Uh, it's up at the beginning of that sentence.
Oh, got you. Here, such fee?
No, that one too. That looks like it's double space.
In here?
And that one, yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um moving on down. The next comment that I see is on page, I believe, fifteen. Oh, this is just a punctuation, right? Uh, and page fifteen. Fire safety and property maintenance inspections. Uh, inspections are required for our safety, property maintenance of buildings, blah, 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 are inspected designated by the Cove at the following intervals, fire safety at least every twelve months. Fire safety and property maintenance for all dormitories shall be performed at least every twelve months. Do we need an and in here? I don't, I don't think it's an and.
Okay.
It it
And then
You haven't used and in that way in other chapters. I don't
It would be and if we needed to have all of those things.
Yes, yeah. So take out and, uh, but you also need to take out the period.
Right, and make it a colon.
Colon, right.
Semi-colon, right, yeah.
One of those things. Yep. I knew which key to hit. I just didn't know. Okay. And that does it for chapter forty. So if there's any other comments right on chapter forty, Marie will check on master fee schedule.
Right.
And I'm gonna move it over to cleaned it. Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, we're on chapter one thirty. Chapter one thirty, water. I think there was just a minor or maybe not minor. Chapter one thirty with CMMR, Matt changes and Matt responses. So the only thing
I forgot one other thing that I have to do. Sorry, Fran, I gotta go back up here. So I'm making a change to the index. And I'm gonna do it in editing mode.
On
One thirty dash three.
On chapter?
One thirty.
Hey.
In the index, one thirty dash three should be Board of Water Commissioners, period.
Right, and take out superintendent.
Superintendent, right.
Perfect, okay.
And then that goes with the change to the addition of the definition of water superintendent and the change to the title of Board of Water Commissioners superintendent is deleted. And the B has been deleted.
Okay, so we're on uh, in page four because it went back and forth and it got sort of redundant about the water superintendent should be the water superintendent. So we decided to add a definition. Water superintendent is the person appointed by the village of trust of trust, uh, Village Board of Trustees as a definition.
Right.
So if we added that, then in one thirty dash three, which is also on page four, Board of Water Commissioners shall consist of the mayor and the Board of Trustees of the village. Uh, and we're taking out, okay, put the glasses back on. We're removing unless determined by the the appointed waste water. Okay, what it said was unless determined by the Village Board of Trustees, the wa- water and wastewater superintendent shall also be act as the water superintendent, which sort of to me sounded redundant. Um, so we basically took that out. And if everyone's okay, I'm just gonna approve through.
And the definition for water superintendent is, it just says the person appointed, should it be appointed to what? Or is that self-explanatory?
We we thought it was.
I guess you're appointed to this position?
Yes.
I, you want me to add that? I can add that.
I I, you know, I I would like it to be added, but if everyone else feels comfortable, I'm I'm okay with it.
Okay, with putting in person appointed to this position, P O S I T. Why, it's been a long day. Is that good? Is that clearer?
It's fine.
Village Board of Trustees. Okay, um, so this is the water chapter, so of application for water service, when the work is completed, the water superintendent. Okay, water and sewer, we're taking out and sewer.
Yep.
It moving down that the dig request is always in green in this. Is that for a reason?
I don't know why.
Okay.
It's earthy.
It's earthy. That works for me. Okay, plumbers when tapping a main should not refill trenches until the work has been inspected and approved by the authorized agent of the board. Um, should this be the water superintendent or just leave it as is?
No, I think it should be the waters. I would think it should be the superintendent.
I mean, I'm good. Yeah.
And this this says that, uh, that that Matt can identify some delegate this responsibility to someone.
Then it's an agent. Isn't it an agent of the superintendent then? Not an agent of the board?
If you want it to be agent of the board, fine.
No, it is an agent. It is
If you want it to be
Right.
Waters, if you want it to be the water superintendent, that's fine, whatever you want.
I think he's the only one that really know. I mean, well, currently and in in the past, the only one that really has the, you know, the knowledge is has been the super superintendent.
Fine.
I am sure, super superintendent. Can we, can we put or someone appointed by him? What if he's not on and we have that company that comes in on weekends and stuff like that or in in place of an emergency? Can we, can we keep it and or?
Well, then you can go back to the authorized.
Yeah.
Can we do or? No.
I guess.
I was suggesting authorized agent of the water superintendent cuz I, isn't he the person who would be selecting that authorized agent? Wouldn't he be the person approving who would be stepping in to do with the work? And we're we're losing, Marie.
No.
Whatever you wanna say.
Yeah.
I I just have not been part of that process. I don't actually know if it is this board or if it is the superintendent. Whatever is correct is fine with me.
I mean, I'm all right. I'm gonna just leave water and superintendent and take out authorized and we'll go on. Okay. Okay, all all street openings in the village of Nelsonville, um, blah, 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 so the by the water superintendent, it's not the water and sewer. Okay, that comes out. Moving down.
I I took the green off the dig or is it supposed to be green?
I don't think so. Thank you. I've seen I've seen it in a couple of places and I don't know whether it just, some of these chapters, some of these chapters, cuz we've worked on them so long, have gotten sort of messed up and then un-messed up. I don't see uh any other other than
Twenty-five, page twenty-five.
Got it, page twenty-five. Uh, if the water superintendent determines that anytime there's a serious threat to public health exists, the water service will be terminated. It terminated immediately. So it's not the water and sewer superintendent. And once more, uh, on page twenty-six, with with taking out wherever it says water and sewer superintendent and just making it the water superintendent.
Right.
And and that's
No, couple more.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Eight, page twenty-eight.
I got the two on twenty-eight.
I think you got them all now, Fran.
I think we got them all. So we're good with chapter one thirty.
I'm gonna step away while we switch chapters and I'll be right back.
So one thirty is good to go?
Yep.
Okay. We have an hour. Chapter one twenty-six.
Yeah. And the intro to chapter one thirty-six. Depending upon how the residential parking permit goes, that will require significant changes to vehicles and traffic. Specifically, it will, it could potentially change the side of the street parking on on Haldane Street. It will definitely change the times of parking on any of the eleven streets that have residential parking permits. It will change, it will identify non-residential parking permit areas. So my recommendation is that we do not focus on the times of day where parking is permitted or the limits, the time limits for when parking is permitted on any of the eleven streets that we're talking about.
Right, I think we should, uh, what we've done is, what I've tried to do is go through this chapter, um, based on conversations that I've had with Larry and Larry and I walking through the village, um, I believe it was last year or sometime in in another my other life. Um, it made some changes to that, tried to balance things out. Marie spent a lot of time putting stuff into tables, so they're just not all over the place. Um, so at that point, if we can clean it up to the point where it will be before we talk about the parking permits and all of that stuff and then we'll have a, we'll have a decent document. If we have to add the residential parking permit and all that kind of stuff, um, we can add it into a clean, hopefully in a clean document.
Right.
Um, so we're starting on page three and there's um, there's general references here. Um, and as Marie said, chapter one oh eight has not mentioned any place in this chapter, so we should take out the streets and sidewalks, which I'm fine. Uh, and also parades, Marie, is that not mentioned in the chapter at all?
No.
Okay, so I'm just gonna pull the general references out of this totally.
Yep.
But is that from from an old version?
Probably.
Remains from changes that were made to an older version?
Um, probably it may have been in there, it may have been deleted. What will happen if we're, uh, if we ever get um, to work with E code, they will do all that cross-referencing back and forth and put stuff where it needs to be.
Okay.
Um, a lot of this chapter has been cleaned up. And as I, as I was working over on it on the past couple of weeks, what I found is one whole bunch of sections from section one twenty-six twenty-four to one twenty-six thirty-one had been totally deleted. And I'm sure it was accidental, so I had to go back a couple of versions back, pull it, copy it and paste it back into place and hope that I remembered. What was, you know, what it was meant to be. So I did the best I could with it. So I would recommend after we clean this up that we all take a look at it again. And cross-reference to what I am doing is, is if we mention a street that says it's like a one-way street, then I'm going back in every other table and make sure is if we mention a street that says it's like a one way street, then I'm going back in every other table and make sure that mention of that street and those tables corresponds to the way it is. Anyway, on page five, I just added a reference to the vehicle and traffic law, the X A V and T law, article one, section one forty nine, which is talked about through streets.
Yeah, Fran, Fran, should it be see New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law? Great.
So that was just a reference entered. My I I replaced one words no flying with two. I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what my
Your dictionary is telling you?
Yeah, so I don't care.
Looks good.
Okay, now those are the easy ones. Okay, this on one twenty six eighteen. Marie and I, I had asked Marie when the parking committee had done their presentation, if there's a way for someone who parks their car on on Main Street, say at nine o'clock in the morning and leaves it until five o'clock in the afternoon. If we get one of those companies, they'll give you a ticket if you haven't paid after two or three hours, whatever it is, but they'll get one ticket and not another one after another three hours. Or is there a way to do that? And then I found this in the code, which basically says that, you know, you are, it's an offense for every two hours that you're stayed, you stay there. But the question is, how do we enforce that? So if it's not enforceable, I mean, I like the the way it's read, but I don't know if it's enforceable. I mean,
Why wouldn't it be enforceable? Previously, you marked with chop some so that the enforcement officer would mark with chalk and then go back through at a period of time.
It's 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 a mark with chalk thing, which is I was hoping that one of these new systems could do it for us automatically.
Well, no, I'm just saying we haven't we done it already?
And you're right.
It's 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 not clear that 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 has occurred. For example, if we take Main Street, which is probably where he he does most of his ticketing. The Main Street limit is four hours. If he starts tick, if he starts looking at nine o'clock, sorry, nine o'clock in the morning is when he starts. Sorry, that's when the parking time limit starts nine o'clock in the morning. The first time you can ticket anybody is after one o'clock in the afternoon. And then the time period expires at five o'clock. So you don't have enough time on Main Street to.
Realistically, I like to leave it in because I'd like it, you know, I mean, you know.
I think it's fine to leave it in. It's not gonna it's not enforceable or if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Now, what I what I have done is I have talked to Park Mobile to find out if there's any way they can do this. And the answer to that is no, I have not talked to UPS to find out if they can do it. So I don't have an answer as to whether or not it's something that's achievable with through UPS.
What did they um, I'm trying to remember, did the parking committee recommend reducing the number of maximum hours on Main Street to try to encourage turnover from four to three?
Yes, sorry, they recommended it be two hours with the the option of
Option to renew.
For for another hour. But a maximum, a maximum of three hours.
Okay, so the previous scenario that you and Fran were just discussing about the four hours and not being able to take it again, that goes away with the change in time, the change in maximum time.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, on on page twelve, this table, all the fees have been updated. We can look at them again, but they've been updated. And again, just as a reminder, um, what we did change, and I think we talked about it last time and back on page on page eleven, penalties for speeding violations are determined by New York State V and T law. And those are not just set by us. And if they are, we judge Costello just goes by the V and T law anyway. So it doesn't make any sense for us to do that. Parking penalties, we have control over. So this is basically where they are. And we have said that. And then at the bottom of the table on page twelve, there's a whole thing about V and T law eighteen, chapter eighteen hundred. Talks about the fines and how much they've increased and so on and so forth. Judge Costello, when I had a conversation with him and Kathy, basically says these notes cause confusion partly because they're long-winded and partly because they're not updated. And so he recommended that we take it out. And so, um, other than leaving the last sentence in that says all fines must not exceed the maximum fine established in New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law. The rest of this I would like to take out if it's okay with everybody.
Yes.
I defer to the justice.
Okay, works for me. Okay. And okay, moving on. This this is all the whole section that was in was out. So I had to put it back in, even though it's not marked. We changed the fact of impounding a car to having a car pulled by an authorized tow company because we can't impound and we don't impound. So if you look at one twenty six, twenty four. In D, it talks about the owner of a vehicle removed by an authorized tow company shall be responsible to pay the tickets of the tow company. And if we have to boot a car, which is in B, which is maybe not in B, which is in C. Then it talks about removing the boot and there was a fee. In E, the owner shall be responsible for payment of the charges for securing the vehicle in the amount of fifty dollars, which is basically removing the the boot in addition to any delinquent parking ticket. So that's all then sort of added in.
And Fran, the under F, you've got F E F.
It looks like the first two are crossed out.
See, that's what that's because I pulled this. And when it came, when I pulled it back over, some of the things that had been crossed out, I couldn't find any notes for, but I couldn't get rid of them. Okay. Moving down on page fifteen, we've got the one-way roadways. From our last discussion, we added in here B street. And I think Cedar and.
No, no, B Street, Orchard Street and Locust Ridge.
And Haldane.
Yes, and how they and how they is actually dependent upon the the parking committee.
I don't think so. I thought we had determined that before the parking committee.
Yeah.
How they would be one way.
Okay.
And they argued it at the presentation that it wasn't part of it, or at least Evan did.
Right.
And railroad, I believe we determined was going to be one way west.
Yes.
And so so and they always deal a situation with that. Let me see, there's a notation from a previous version. Locust Ridge, okay, that that notation probably belongs to the fact that Locust Ridge was changed in the middle of the day on school days, right?
Right.
So I'm gonna take that out and.
Oh, and I I so I I think you need to leave it in.
Okay.
Because we need the history of the changes to the chapter. What will probably be added to that is the the deletion of it as a notation. And then by the local law that this goes under.
Okay.
So just for the time being, just leave it.
Okay, so that will stay in.
Yes.
Let me see. So that would be the one-way streets. And then we got prohibited turns at intersections. And then we went through.
The one-way streets are, these are ones we are intending to make one way?
No, these are the ones that most of these were one way except for Haldane, Locust Ridge, which we changed in our last conversation a couple of weeks ago, B Street. Orchard.
I don't see Orchard on here.
Next page.
Yeah.
Next page, sorry.
Yeah.
There we go. Sorry about that. Okay.
And in railroad.
Right.
Most of the others were already one ways.
Yep.
And then prohibited transit intersections. This is the Benedict Road. No turning into Foodtown Plaza from Benedict Road. Cross Street, no right turn onto Fair Street, and that's the Saturday, Sunday thing. Depot Square, no right turn onto railroad. That's because we've determined to make railroad a one-way street. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of these were pretty much there.
High Street, High Street's a new one.
I treat it rubbish on high.
Well, if Haldane goes west, you can't turn on to it.
Oh, right.
From high.
Right.
And Northern Avenue is is.
And then the the addition of Locust Ridge and B Street from Main Street because they're coming out onto Main Street.
Okay, so you've got Main Street.
And then.
No turns onto B, no turns onto Locust.
Oh, there should be one for Mountain Avenue. No turn onto Orchard.
Okay, so I need to add.
Right.
Mountain Avenue.
Right.
I will, we will read this over again and again and again, M U N. Because it did. So that'd be going north or south, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it will be right and then left. I'm getting it, Marie.
No, wait a minute. It's Mountain Avenue. It should be east, west on Mountain Avenue.
Right, sorry, okay. Onto Orchard, right?
Correct. And you've got east, west and right, left, correct.
Can I make a suggestion? That might.
No.
Well, I'm gonna throw it out there.
I'm gonna tease you, Kelly.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The problem that Dave just had, and I continue to have looking at this, is when the table breaks from page to page.
Need the headings.
Difficult not to have the headings. So I know that things are gonna shift in formatting, but in the formal format, in the final format, if a table breaks page to page, it would be useful to continue the header.
Yeah, hopefully it will. And I may try to just, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna volunteer.
Do it now.
Yeah. That's why a lot of times I'll print this whole thing out because I can't really follow it.
Yeah, that's that's what I've been doing too. And it it's just hard when you're on on screen to go back. I have to keep going back up to remember what the column meant.
We do need to look at this again to make sure nothing is missing. On one twenty six thirty, we talked about U-turns prohibited. Now, this was a very long um, chart. And it named every street that was one way and you couldn't make U-turns on it. So I took that out and basically said in accordance with provisions one twenty six, six, U-turns are prohibited on all one-way streets listed in one twenty six, twenty eight above. In addition, U-turns are prohibited on the following streets. So these are U-turns are prohibited in all one-way streets. And then these streets, which are not one-way, but we don't want U-turns on. So for example, on Terrace or Fair Street. Fair from Main to Northern. Main Street from Parsonage all the way down to Long Terrace. And then so on and so forth. So.
What's the logic of, I understand the logic of most of them. What's the logic of Mountain because of so many pedestrian crossings?
Um, you know, it's the white street. I know that. But you know, my thinking on a lot of this stuff is you can just go around the block. I mean, we could take Mountain out.
I mean, as there, I just wondering what the logic was. If there's logic and it's defensible, I think it's fine. I just don't, I don't know what it is.
I don't, I don't know how badly there are U-turns done on Mountain Avenue. I just think, I just think. And it was just sort of a thought. And it doesn't have to be in there. So I mean, it was just a case of if you can go around the block, why make a U-turn? I know people don't like going around blocks, but. So I.
Seems to be that a U-turn is is dangerous.
Yeah, well, I mean, especially where there's heavy pedestrian traffic. I just wanted to understand the other, some of the other streets I understand because they're heavily trafficked or very narrow.
Yeah.
And Mountain Avenue is heavily trafficked at certain times.
So Fran, Fran, could you highlight the added two fourteen, two seventeen? It it shouldn't be there.
Okay.
So I need to do some research on that.
All right.
It 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 probably belongs someplace else. And
Right.
The Main Street, the added blah, 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 that should be bolded.
I know that I know there is a definite way to put added and amended and all that kind of stuff. I used to do that with with Mary and and they're probably not all in the right places at all. Anyway. The next list is through streets.
I need to, I don't understand conversation that's happening here in the sidebar.
Sorry.
Okay, so um.
I don't understand.
Because yeah, I could not find a definition of, I could find a definition in New York State for through highway, but not necessarily through street. And we went back and forth over this. Basically, a through street is a street that like, you know, all the other intersecting streets have to stop and the traffic keeps going. So for example, Main Street. Academy Street, to me, you know, it's through at Cherry because the the traffic coming out of Cherry Street stops. But then it gets to Paulding. And Academy stops, which is, I guess Academy is through from from Main to Paulding. Because it's oncoming traffic, any traffic coming through stops.
And what is the the necessity from a to from a ticketing or enforcement standpoint to identify for example, you gave to identify Academy by block as either through or not through.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we looked at this, Marie and I looked at this and went back and forth over it.
There's no ticketing associated with through streets.
Yeah.
Why do we identify? Why do we need to identify these as such?
This, I don't, I don't know why we do. I mean, it.
The only reason is because it had been identified in previous versions of one twenty six.
Yeah.
I I would have to find out, and this is where E code could help us, is whether or not this that is a mandatory element for the vehicle and traffic chapter.
Is the goal of this section to say that streets that intersect with streets through streets need to have a traffic control device, a stop sign?
No, I don't, you know, they do, but we have another whole section on stop intersections.
That's that's why I'm I'm trying to figure out how this is different and what the goal is.
And we're not sure because it's been here for a zillion and a half years.
Larry advise on this one?
Um, probably. I mean, we could go back to New York State V and T law and see if it even needs to be here. It was put in, I'm sure when the original code was written, there is a book that Jeff has on his desk over in the corner. There was like original village code from nineteen forty or something like that. And most of our original code came out of sections like that.
Well, I mean, if it has a purpose, I understand why it remains. But if it doesn't serve a purpose and it's confusing.
Can we get it out?
Can we get it out? Right.
Yeah, that's the.
I would not take it out just because we've, no, no criticism, Kathleen. I would take, I wouldn't take it out because we find it confusing. I the only reason I think it should come out is if the the requirement for a village code that talks about vehicles and traffic has to have in it the identification of through streets.
Well, that's that's what I'm asking. If it serves a purpose, the confusing is confusing is off to the side. If it serves a purpose, I can understand leaving it. But right now, I I don't understand.
If it's a required element, it stays in.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a required element. But it's not just this. It's also one twenty six dash seven.
Right.
Right.
So yet to be determined.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see. And we we went back and forth over this for a while today. Okay, so that's something that needs to be checked. So that's that's for that entire section. And moving on. All right, you're gonna review that. All right, so the re, all right, so the through streets. I'm going to take out the long discussion. I'm going to take out the long discussion part and just leave the comment I just put in. Next stop intersections, and these are pretty much the entire village. Every place is a.
Sorry, Fran, can you go back to uh page twenty? The.
Page twenty?
Yeah. Um, where scheduled for is through streets is highlighted. Right before that is the page number.
Yeah, this thing sort of, is that always, is that better? Oh, I see, it's got it.
Some, something happened to that table.
That's not what I wanted to do. Hang on for a second. Yeah, this is what's been happening. And I, for some reason or other, can't get it out of there.
It's probably in the footer. Why would the footer be there?
Maybe it was originally the footer. No, it's not what I wanted to do either.
Yes, somehow this got into the middle of one way. So, yeah, it got into the middle of one-way streets.
This, yeah, see, this is what happened last time. Crap. This is what happened last time. Stuff gets deleted, unfortunately.
Are we, we're looking at page twenty-six?
No, we're, we're back up to page twenty. Some of it got deleted in the process.
Yeah, the through-street table got landed in the middle of one-way roadways.
Oh, I see.
Okay, is it better now?
Hold on a second. Um, we've got one thirty.
Yeah, that's what happened last time. It got screwed up.
One thirty-two, one thirty-one, through streets, it's good.
Okay, I'm just gonna put, I'm gonna put a smaller note here. If this is not required.
I don't see you typing on page twenty. Are you now in a difference?
No, I'm back up, I'm back down to page eighteen. Uh, back up to page eighteen, is that?
Okay, I see it now.
Okay, is that, hopefully we didn't lose this again because this, this, some reason or other, this chapter is a little bit nuts.
I am, I am sorry to bail on you. I got shot too today. I just need to go to bed. Um. Well, I'm gonna, it's eight o'clock, I'm gonna bail. I held out as long as I could. Um.
Take it easy.
You, after some sleep.
Okay, hope you don't feel bad tomorrow.
I think I'll be fine. I just need to sleep.
Take it easy.
Good night, Kathleen.
Good night.
Hi Kathleen, take care.
Okay, so through streets, um. There aren't that many of them unless we've lost some in the process, but I don't think so.
No, there were, it, it, it would, it became a much shorter list.
Right, okay. So then we're on the stop intersections and this pretty much, um. Goes. Through the whole village, there's stop signs or there should be stop signs. Or we added Forge Gate. Um, at Long Terrace, which I believe there's a stop sign there and then Forge Gate at the Boulevard, which if there isn't, there should be. Um.
Yeah, we have a comment from Kathleen on Mountain Avenue.
Right, um. So. It said, uh, what we said is if Mount, if Locust becomes one-way south, then we need to remove the Mountain Avenue. Uh, stop sign going west to Locust because Locust will be coming out. Um, and then Kathleen says it shouldn't be removed. The stop signs are at this location of Mountain Locust to calm the traffic. Coming around the corner from Cedar becau- before the pedestrian intersection to school. Um. I mean, to me, stop signs are there because there's cross traffic. Um. So I don't know, do we wanna, um. Alright, so she leaves a comment because of, it's only if we determine Locust was gonna become one-way.
Maybe, ma- maybe sh- she's thinking, no, that can't be it. Uh, the, the stop sign on Mountain Avenue is not going to be removed. It, it's a stop sign on Mountain Avenue. What would be removed is a stop sign on Locust Ridge. Um, that is going north.
Mountain.
Right, right. But this is, this is the. So the comment, Fran, your comment, if Locust becomes one-way, then there, we don't want to remove. The uh stop sign on Mountain Avenue and Locust Ridge. I agree with Kathleen's comment. This is to, to calm the traffic.
Okay. So I'm gonna take this out.
Um, well, let's just make sure, okay, can we make sure?
Cause the heading, the heading says the stop sign on Mountain Avenue at the intersection of Locust Ridge.
Right.
So that's where we want to leave it.
Yeah, so this is, this is traffic uh going, uh, actually, on Mountain Avenue going east. There's a stop sign at Locust Ridge. There's a stop sign on Mountain Avenue going west. Coming down from Cedar Street at Locust Ridge, which is stay there.
So should they both stay there?
Um. Actually, I, I'd have to ask Kathleen. She knows that intersection far better than I do. So, so can we, can we put in a, a, talk to Kathleen about this?
Okay. Yeah, already. Moving down, moving down. Yield intersections, the one and only yield intersection in the village. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the, um. Speed regulations, the speed regulations, um. Basically, we, you know, they, they put in here that the speed was gonna be fifteen in the village and that was illegal, so we had to go back to what it had to be.
Right.
Was thirty. And the, the amended on, in nineteen ninety-six, that law has to be. And yes, because of superseding state law, uh, state law, and that's correct. Unless we can get the state to agree to, we don't want to do that. Uh, we're now at a point. We're now at.
The.
Anytime.
Right, and, and. Certainly, we can, we can review those streets that are not among the eleven.
Right.
Sorry, sorry. There are, there are portions where we don't have the, the length.
Yes. Um, okay, so we pulled, I mean, we'd had this discussion before. We pulled no parking. We pulled parking on B Street, which I think was always no parking.
I believe you're.
Cedar Street at the.
On the, uh, the, this, the speed regulations, wh- what is the, does it have to be a public school or? Or what, how does, where does that fall in? Like, when it can be twenty-five? Gonna be like a Montessori school? Can it be the Nest?
I don't know.
Uh, hold on a second.
Because we've also got the, um. The, the school.
It's an intersection, I think, I, I, I did look it up. I think it's where, within five hundred feet. Of the school and a state road.
So the Nest, can the Nest be considered a school?
I don't know, it's a pre.
Nah, you're right.
What, but what about this Minnetonka School?
That's not within the village.
Oh, the line changes.
I think we're good then, yeah. I guess that's not really.
The state road.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, no parking any so, anytime. There's a whole bunch of streets. Um, yeah, Chestnut Street. From the north side of the Medical Center to the south side of forty-four. There was, there was another one in here that we pulled today that said basically Chestnut Street. From the senior center to the hydrant. So since we couldn't determine what hydrant they were talking about back about twenty years ago. And we covered it in.
Yeah, and it also said for forty-four feet, and this one is longer than forty-four feet, so it covers it.
Um. Okay, so, so a lot of these are around the corners. Um. So, so.
Yeah.
Some of them we have questions on. For example, in Church Street. Um, we believe there's no parking at the area close to the intersection of Northern, but we have to determine.
The distance. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I know one that we added, the last time we were meeting was on Depot Square Railroad Avenue, that angle in front of. The north end of one Depot Square, that Angle Street. We've got a couple.
One Depot, one, one Depot Square is the entire, is the entire, um. Uh, depot restaurant there, outside area and all the way to the north.
Does it include the ice cream parlor?
I believe so.
Okay, so that's, that's where this is. So that would be the north end of one Depot Square, I guess. This is as best as I could define it, because it was Depot Square and Railroad Avenue.
Yeah, I, I, let me see if I can pull up the, the map.
There's actually a parking spot there.
I know, and Larry has asked it to be removed.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I would agree. It's a strange.
Yeah, so, so he, that's one of the spaces he's asked if we could remove it, so I put that into this. And it's, it's a weird angled street there. And, and if railroad's coming west, it's coming down and around. So then we've got like Fishkill Avenue, uh, from northern, north for, we have to measure some feet of footage here. Uh, on Fishkill on.
Fishkill and Northern don't intersect.
I'm sorry, on Mountain. And I did say Northern. It's been a long day. Fishkill Avenue from Mountain Avenue North. For X amount of feet.
Right, this, this is the, the area, um, between Mountain Avenue and the dead end. On the east side of the street.
Right in front of that house there. So there's no parking there. We just need to determine how to write it.
What the length is.
Right, and then the same with Furnace from Main Street South for how many feet? Uh, the same with Campbell.
Now, as it, as it turn, as it turns out, uh, Fran just moved from the, um, upper portion of the village to. The lower portion of the village. So Garden, Furnace, Campbell, those are all residential parking and or. Specific spaces for metered parking.
So if we're gonna, if we're going to do that, some of this may have to change.
Yes.
A lot of this may have to change. So, you know, as, as it is now, um, and then we'll just move on depending on what, what the parking committee suggests.
Right.
Um, we've got, um, Haldane Street, which we've determined will be one-way going west. Um, and no parking, Marie, they, Marie said you wanted no parking on the south side of that, right?
Right now, that's the way it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the north side, just between the two signs at the entrance to McConville Park.
And, and that's there, that's there for two reasons. One is so that people can get into the park and the other is so that Gene Lozardi can, can get out of his driveway.
See, I, I don't agree with that one, but I don't battle it out now. Too late. It's already, this, those streets are two feet, that, how they shoot is about two or three feet at the most. narrower than any other street and everyone else has, is fine pulling out without, with cars across the street, but.
Well.
That's a way, using up two spaces that we could use.
I mean, we, we, there's always been no parking between those signs. We, if we're gonna have no parking on the other side, we can eliminate this. It's up to. Um, you know, what, what we decide.
Well, Dave's point is, if parking is done on the south side, then you've got moms and kids walking across.
Walking across the street, yeah.
Right, so the safest place is to put it, um, parking on the north side.
Do we need to clear the space between the signs?
I'm not sure of the question.
Now, Dave was saying he doesn't agree with having the no parking between the signs, um, area. The one that you said for the entrance to McConville Park and for somebody backing out of his driveway. So.
I'd take another look.
I mean, there, there's.
I won't, or you can leave it right now, but.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna take that. Yeah, there's a couple of places that I think, um, you know, as we go on, we'll talk, um. Locust Ridge from Mountain Avenue intersection fifty feet south and Kathleen is saying something about. The length of the street is problematic for buses and ambulances when there's parking on both sides. Um, if someone parks slightly a bit wide of the curb. I don't know, um, and there's something about kids darting out, uh, you know, I have, I have an issue. And it's probably not gonna sound good, but, uh, kids should not be darting out in, in and out around cars. Uh, and I don't think we can, we can regulate the parking on our streets based on the fact that kids are darting in and out of traffic. You know, that's, that's.
Can we add Academy Street on the top as you pull in to, as you pull into Academy from Main Street? There's the person that parks there now. It, it, it's really dangerous. They, it, you know, it's a ma- I don't know how many feet it goes in. We would have to measure it, but if you come around that turn, it's narrow and the cars park too close to the, you know, corner. Not that it's really close, but I think, I think we should look at it and make no parking there. Move it one more space.
Uh, you on the east side or the west side?
Um, the, there's only, it's on the, uh, west side. I don't think there's parking on the other side. That's where that big tree was.
Yeah, yeah.
The cars always parked there. It's like, I don't know, I'm surprised it hasn't been hit.
Would you say the west side?
Yes, the west side.
Now, were we talking from main?
Yes.
From main, uh.
South.
Heading south. I can, I can take a measure or whatever. Is that what we're doing? Measures, yeah.
Yeah, if you can do a measure. And can you change Academy, uh, slide to Academy Street?
Sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Alright, so that takes care of that one. Alright, alright, alright. Yeah, there's probably a lot of other places. Um, this Locust Ridge thing. Um, from Mountain Avenue intersection fifty feet south.
That's there now.
That's there now. Kathleen wants to.
I don't know what she wants to do.
I'm not sure what she wants to do. The length of the street is problematic. The length, I, I don't know. It's a February note. Um, could this street be one-side parking with resident permits? We can't. Cause we don't, the street is not on the resident permit thing and it's not going there. Not this, not this iteration. Um. I don't know about one-side parking on, on Locust. If we're making Locust one-way all the time. Should we just clear this one? It's gone. Sorry, sorry, Kathleen. Um. Okay, so we've got Main Street North from Fair. Try, I'm, um. Fair Street, okay. So we've got no parking on Main Street. Heading north from Fair Street, on the north side from Fair Street, so many feet west. Um, and I was wondering if we could do something similar to this with other streets that come onto Main Street because you can't see. Coming out of High Street.
Or Church Street.
On Church Street or any other streets coming on to Main, you can't see traffic. Um, I think, I think we've, David's taking a, a break. So I'm going.
Fran, it was good talking to you tonight.
There you are, Dave, we lost you.
I, I think it's hard to do that, the pulling out. I know what you mean, but I think you'd have to eliminate like three spaces before.
I know, that's, that's the issue.
At least two, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we don't have space. We don't have parking. I don't know if mirrors. You know, those mirrors you can put across the street so you can see if any of that would make any sense. I've never gotten used to using those things and.
I think we could definitely come up and see, come up, you know, a certain length, but you know, maybe one car length.
It's eighteen feet.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's like, I think it's supposed to be sixteen from crosswalks, but from the corner, like, I think that would help. I think it's always gonna be risky coming out of the streets.
It is, you know, and, and I don't know what the answer to it is.
Then if you have a, a truck, you know, or a van, forget it.
Yeah, truck or a van parked there, yeah, or parked across the street in the no, in the cop parking area.
Exactly, yes.
That, I can't, I can't see when it's parked there.
Or if you're walking across the street there, no one can see you.
Right, right.
Let's move the village hall.
Let's, let's do that. I think we should, we should move it up.
The town hall looks really nice now. We can maybe move up there.
I haven't looked. I'll have to go see. Are they gonna have a big open house party?
They should. It looks beautiful.
They should too. Okay, so Marion Avenue, um. We stopped parking on the entire length of it.
On the west side, Dave.
On the west side, yes.
You remember the problems last year?
Yes, we had people fighting in the middle of the street because one car was going one-way and, and another one wanted to go another way. So that's, that's a new addition and that stays. Cause we had to, we had to cone it off anyway. All right. Going down the Pike. Okay, so Rock Street, we're just gonna, there's a, at the turn, there's no parking. We just have to find where. Then you go West Street, from the north end of the street to the designated parking. We don't know where that is, Dave. Do you have any idea? He ran away.
The street to.
West Street, it says from the north end of the street to designated parking. To me, that goes into Dockside and it's across from Moomoo's or across from North Street. But there's parking there.
West Street on the west side. North end. Um. Unless it means from the, from Dockside or Dockside Park to to that first space, there's, there's the empty lot, Impels Lot. And then the, then I think the parking starts.
Oh, there's an area there which is wider, and then the, and then it, it, so that area is narrow and then it widens out once it goes Impels. Okay.
I think that's where, that's the only thing I can think.
Yeah.
I guess we could find an address for this.
And you come in off of uh north, north, yeah, there's a space from Dockside, that corner over to past Impels' property, and then the parking starts.
Yeah.
We probably could find it. Is there an address for Impels' property?
I'll hold on a second.
I mean, it makes sense.
It's sad when I'm starting to talk.
So it's Three West Street.
Okay, so from the north end of the street to the south of, um.
To South Three West Street, right.
Okay, so we deleted that. And that takes care of that.
Yeah.
Okay. In front of the sewer pump station. Okay, areas provided for off-street parking. We don't list the ball field because it doesn't belong to us. Haldane's asking, can we now use the senior center at the American Legion? Since the senior center is not there, no, because it's private property.
Kathleen wants, Kathleen wants to use that for winter parking.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna work. Unless we, unless our guys plow it out like they did when the seniors were there, but that's neither here nor there. It still won't be good for winter parking unless you negotiate with the American Legion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kathleen has a comment.
Yes, at page twenty-nine on Mountain Avenue.
Yeah.
And this is.
I don't know what this is.
This is the section of no stopping, no standing. Mountain Avenue South on the south side from Craig Side, east to Locust Avenue. She wanted to be um, from Craig Side to Cedar. I don't, I'm not that familiar with, I mean, I know where it is, but I don't know what goes on there. Should we extend it or not?
I can't remember whether or not it's, it's um, yellow lined out on the south side. We could use her, her understanding of the area on this.
Should we make it Cedar then, Mountain Avenue?
I think it is crossed out right now. This, it's out along the section along the cemetery.
No, on the other side.
On the south side.
Oh, on the south side.
Yeah, across the street, yeah. All right, so we'll take a look at this.
Yeah. So it's eight twenty-six. Do we wanna?
Oh, Marie, you're having so much fun.
I am. So, I mean, we're gonna go into limited time parking and
No.
For many of the streets, it's going to change.
Yeah, and all right, so let's, we'll, we'll stop at one twenty-six thirty-nine.
Yeah.
So that's where we start again. So even once we finish one twenty-six, and then we look at one thirty-four, then we're, we're pretty much just waiting for um, the STR public hearing and the public, and the parking public here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll begin one twenty-six thirty-nine next time.
Okay.
It's been fun.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Fran, for guiding us through this.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, I will second that.
On favor.
I.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Michael, thank you.
Yes, Michael, thank you.